Order, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do not have any changes to the agenda?
I do. My name is spot on on the second page.
What? On this agenda?
Item D on the second page.
I think you're talking about, are you talking about the minutes?
No, no, C R F. Give me the update. Frame her at eight.
Oh.
That's a sports, that's a sports announcement.
We have to give her updates, sports announcements, boys.
Do us a favor.
Any other misspellings or changes?
Motion to approve, have the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes from the May 16th meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Bills in between?
Motion to approve?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to take a couple of minutes with regard to the attorney's bill. The copies I got show that of the $6,136.50.
Can you clear up how much?
Looking at page three and four. Starting with April 8th, 2016. We had a councilperson call in and spend an hour, point one, point six hours, 1.6 hours, with the attorneys. Then again on the 11th.
There's a correction there. Calls to Nolan was part of that. She may have spent an hour working on it, but she didn't spend an hour talking to me. And there's, she sent an email, but she did not spend an hour talking to me.
Can you please use your microphone?
So are you saying that it's 8, 11, 12, 14, a minute, minute, or an hour and four, 1.4 hours instead of 1.6?
I don't, I couldn't tell you that. I don't know how much, I sent her an email. How long does an email take? But I don't know how long she works on things.
Well, it says here, review message from you and call her back, point two hours. Emails Schwarzenbach forwarded regarding amending the tree ordinance, point three. Reviews state statutes and new House bill regarding whether the council can amend an ordinance before a second reading, point eight. And calls to Nolan regarding the same point two, which was not recorded as part of yours. And then another email indicating the plan to move forward.
Is there a problem with me talking to the attorney?
Yeah, when you don't, when you don't share the information that you got from the attorney with the rest of the council. And it's costing us.
I sent it to Andrew and Nolan.
I'm just saying, I think it was all sent out in the, in the information. It was regarding if the, the, what was it? It was that one ordinance, there was a tree ordinance, could we, yeah.
Well.
That was all sent out.
Over and above, whether it was sent out or not, these are all questions that could have been answered by the municipal league at no cost to the city instead of $435 for 2.9 hours.
We should move on to more of that.
That's not accurate.
So my question is, is do we discuss this now or do we need to talk about this in executive session? But I feel that something should be done about this. I do not use the attorneys. I don't know if anybody else does or not. If I did use the attorneys, I would supply the information I received to each one of the council members in writing, not in email, because I don't get that, for one thing.
I'll be glad to print everything I have. I have it on my computer. I'll get it to everyone on the council.
But that's, that's after the fact.
And I can't change that.
I have to complain about the $435 spent by one councilperson. If it had been four of us, it had been close to $3,000. If we all spent that amount of time conversing with the attorney. And my understanding is, is that we're, if we do address the attorneys or try to call them, we're supposed to have authorization from the mayor to do that.
I don't want to go into everything that happened. I did try to handle this through Nolan. Nolan, is that correct?
I love what you did.
I did and wasn't able to, and the city attorney did help.
Am I incorrect in stating that this information could have been provided from?
You're incorrect. You're incorrect.
I'm incorrect? On what issue?
I would, if I could get this information from the municipal league, I would have. What they tell you, have you ever called the municipal league?
Yeah.
Yes, I have, as many times.
And what they tell you is, your attorney has the last word. If you have a question, they will not give you a legal answer. If you need a legal answer, they always tell you to call your city attorney.
Please speak into your mic. I'm getting a handful of, giving feedback on there.
In as many times as I've called the municipal league, they have never told me that I should call the city attorney and ask him this question and be charged for it. They would answer my question as directly as possible, and I would take that as the guidance received from the state.
Carl, that's incorrect. They cannot give you a legal answer. I'm speaking into my microphone.
It's not turned on, somebody turned it back off.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's on.
Down, Ford, yes.
Are you fine, Carol Ann? We hear you fine.
Okay, they can hear me.
We hear you fine.
Is there anything else, Carl?
I'm going to interject a little bit here, because I did.
I can't hear you.
I said I'm going to interject here just a little. I feel like maybe this needs to be brought to the admin committee and possibly an ordinance to establish whether we do call or do not call the attorney and how the fees are going to be paid. And we can talk about that later, but I feel like there is an issue here.
I think if you'll read in different articles we have, anyone on the city council has the right to call the city attorney.
The problem is, how often?
I still haven't called her three times. I called in April, May, June. I don't do that very often.
We do have a public hearing at 7:10, it's already 7:00 or 9:00. I guess to recap from the employee's standpoint, it sounds like we don't have a clear policy as to when to call the city attorney. And also, we need to establish a practice for getting information to ensure all members of the council have that same information. Assuming that information's not privileged to one council member, does sound like we have work to do ourselves to get that clarified, to have these same concerns arise in the future.
And you can do that through putting it on our agenda for the admin.
That'd be a good policy.
Okay, thank you.
Put a draft policy together, draft ideas together, then we'll.
And I have, I have five days of consultation, which made up the two hours and 2.9 hours that was used at 435.
I'm going to have to stop our discussion because we have a public hearing right now.
We'll go back to it?
Yes, of course.
I'm going to go to hearings, item A at 7:10 here. Temporary alcoholic beverage license for Rotary Club for the 2nd of July Street Dance in Centennial Park.
Can we combine A, B, and C?
No, I can't because they're different times. Oh, but this is a public hearing. I'm hoping that up to any comments from the public about a temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Rotary Club on the 2nd of July at Centennial Park. Also known as the Street Dance. Annual event.
I would move, we close the hearing.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
And I will move to accept that temporary license.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item A, motion carried. We have four minutes to continue discussion on the current claim.
Now, we can go back to the current claims. I'm done explaining what I had to explain with concern to that one bill.
All right. I will speak into the microphone. If you look at page two of Gunderson Palmer's bill, on 318, the mayor asked Sarah Frankenstein to review statutes prohibiting a member of the public from attending a city council meeting, $120. On 321, the mayor also got the information, I guess, from her. Sarah researched state laws regarding open meetings. If a person can be prohibited from attending, potential consequences. Research case law regarding the same. Draft correspondence to send, to potentially to individuals prohibiting them from attending a city council meeting for a period of time. I would like to know from the mayor, who and why?
I think if we're going to discuss legal correspondence, it should be in executive session.
No, it's not. This is public.
This is discussing correspondence with your legal counsel, privileged covered by executive session.
No, it's not. I checked.
It is.
It's not.
It certainly is.
It is not. This is, this is a public document, this bill.
Correct.
And I'm not asking for anything that was given to her from the lawyer. I'm asking the mayor.
You're not asking for correspondence?
No. I'm asking the mayor, why and who? I'm not asking about the correspondence.
This is a police matter. I received four police reports and one very serious phone call concerning a couple individuals, and I had to act on it. And I'm not going to discuss it because it's a police matter and public.
So I can check with the police department and find out.
If I don't have the information to you.
This is $870 was spent on this.
When four people from the community write a complaint and I received a very serious phone call, I have to act on it, yes.
You have to act to make someone unable to attend meetings?
No.
You felt like that was necessary?
Carol Ann, this is a police matter, and I'm not going to address it further tonight.
It doesn't say anything about being a police matter. It says exactly what you asked her to research. Open meeting laws prohibiting attending potential consequences, research law, and draft correspondence to two individuals prohibiting them from meeting.
Can I make a statement here? I don't believe everyone has the option to reading your information, and I don't believe it was made public to everyone. And so I don't think we can discuss that at this table.
It's the bill I asked to see on Gunderson Palmer.
Well, before I think everyone, right here. All of us should have that. The bills are available to view at City Hall, and I can get everyone a copy of the bill and questions so that you can look at this and discuss it further.
That would be good, because I want them to see exactly why I called.
Do we have motions to omit any certain bills, or is this more so questions?
I've got to go to a public hearing right now.
I just wondered if this was a personal bill, a personal problem you had with individuals?
As I stated, I received four police reports, and I had to follow up on these two. Okay, hearings, item B, temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Rotary Club for the 4th of July, Community Picnic at the Mueller Center. This is a public hearing. You may now comment, any concerns about this alcoholic beverage license?
I'll make a motion, close the hearing. Okay, just a motion to approve it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We can go back to the discussion on the current claims.
Well, we have a motion and a second to approve. I call the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, curta cards.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will make one further comment with concern to current claims. I'll take my concerns to the admin promo meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We can figure out something from there.
Okay.
The only problem with that is it doesn't ever come to the city council.
Pardon?
Problem with that goes to that committee.
Andrew, we need you to speak on the line.
The only problem with that is it doesn't ever come to city council. So if you're not at that meeting, nobody ever knows about what happens at those meetings, I guess.
I believe that the administrative of finance is reported on by committee.
I understand that. I'm just saying, I work. I can't go to those meetings. So, I mean, and I'm sure not all of us, we can't all be there. That would be a quorum. So you can't all be there to be able to understand what's going on.
It's a publicly advertised meeting.
But we cannot all be there, is what I'm trying to say.
We can if we state that there's going to be a quorum.
Just don't get paid to this meeting.
But Andrea.
If there are action, so Andrea.
Right, we would not take action on anything in that meeting. It would come before the full council. Just like in a committee meeting, they'd make a recommendation that would come before the full council. Any other comments after? Okay. All right. I'm going to propose we do all personnel, A through K, in the next 30 seconds or so.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion on any of the personnel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can you do a one-minute?
Yeah, we did not have an admin meeting, so that's good. Finance, I think everybody has gotten the finance reports from Ms. D that are in our packets, and that is really appreciated, thank you. We do have amounts and everything that we've asked for for a long time, so that should help a lot.
And the next meeting is?
Yeah, the next meeting is next Monday at 1:00.
You want to take a few seconds to say when the next Airport Advisory Committee meeting is?
Next airport advisory meeting will be the last Friday of the month, which is the 24th of June at 8:00 in the morning at the airport.
All right. 7:20, so I'm going to go to item C under hearings and open up the hearing for the temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Rotary Club for the 24th of September for the Climb Hot Springs event in Centennial Park. This, I believe, is a new event. The other two are pretty ingrained in our history, but this is a new event that we're doing in Hot Springs. The stairs are very busy this year. So if you have any public comments about this, please let us know.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Discussion? Oh, you're, you're, sorry. You made a motion to accept the license?
Yes.
Can you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That is all of our hearings for tonight. Now I'm going to go back to committee reports on, probably not anything from the chamber yet, right?
I did have a little bit more to say on the airport, though. They did have some spraying that was missed because of his GPS was off a little bit, so he's going to return to spray just a little. But it did help. And then we also had a Citron jet land out there, and they came to Hot Springs to do prairie dog hunting, how is that? And they inquired about jet fuel. And Rapid and Shattern have jet fuel, we do not. They asked for courtesy car when they called, that was a planned event. And they're still looking for the roller to come out to smooth out the bumps, and also the stump grinder to grind some of the stumps. That was it.
All right, anything else, Georgia? Okay. Item C, Chamber of Commerce, here.
Check your Hot Springs magazine, Soakin the Activities. We've got a lot of activities coming up in June. We've got a Fall River Swim Team, Wildlife Fishing Tournament in Angostura, the 11th through 12th, Screen on the Greens movie series on the 14th, 70th Annual Miss South Dakota Scholarship Pageant. You'll notice the banners all the way down Main Street, the new Soakin slogan banners. We've included the Miss South Dakota photos of all the contestants. That's June 16th through 18th, 24th through 26th. We have our 40th Annual Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival in Centennial Park, 18th and 19th, 52nd Father's Day Golf Invite, and then Screen on the Green again on June 28th. EIS study was, forums were to be turned in by June 6th. Overnight Advantage, we've got several people. You can get a list from the Hot Springs Chamber of all the participants for the businesses. We can display these. They're also on the Chamber website and the city website of the participating businesses for the Overnight Advantage. And the depot is open for the season, and we're going to keep that open through September this year.
Andrea? The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District.
Our meeting is on July 14th. That'll be the first one that I attend, so it'll be something new. So I will come back with a bunch of information.
And thank you for accepting that new position. Appreciate it. All right, item E, Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Ann.
The commission met June the 1st. We received an update on efforts to recoup the demolition cost on 315 North River Street from Ms. Barbary. Signed by DeLeese, was approved unanimously. City signed for Centennial Park, approved unanimously. And Ms. Barbary discussed the status of vacant buildings both in and outside of the historic district, and that's it. Until next month.
Thank you, Carol Ann. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, here.
June, our big event is Father's Day, and Dad's getting free with at least one other paid admission. We have our minute meetings, I'll go through briefly. We all discussed the ADA pool lift again. We have the stair lift in the hallway going upstairs to the weight room. That was partially donated by a local member of Evans Plunge. Steve Winy is developing, is working on developing a ramp system plan that he's going to present. Member has someone she knows who could potentially design and build a ramp for the pool, and we're going to be talking about that at the next meeting. The mushroom outside was painted.
It was not a mushroom anymore.
And Tom worked diligently on getting the outdoor pool cleaned up and open. It looks great. The pool was open Memorial Day weekend. I have to say, that was a fantastic weekend for Evans Plunge. The 27th through the 30th, we made over $19,000 in revenue, which was fantastic. And we are still looking into hot showers. We will probably look into this until we can figure it out or not. We had someone say that they could potentially give us a bit of half the cost of what our previous $20,000 estimate was. He's a local contractor, so we're excited to hear what that is potentially going to be. We talked about ripping out that red carpet upstairs and the blue carpet that's been there forever, and it's kind of musty and moldy and old. Personal training at Evans Plunge, we discussed that. And we also discussed quarterly meetings, and we decided to have our next meeting then, I think that was in July? We're going to pick that one up in July? Are we going to hold off? I think we discussed quarterly. And then we added five months. More as needed. Okay. So there you have it.
It was reported to me that because of the lightning, you had to reimburse pool members' admission fees. How many, how many had to be reimbursed because of the lightning?
I don't believe we had any we had to have reimbursed. I'm going to have Nolan answer that question. That came up in discussion over email.
How long were we down over Memorial Day?
How long were we down over Memorial Day?
Because of the lightning?
We didn't close.
Yep, but they weren't allowed to swim in the water.
They had to leave the pool until the storm passed, and that's only an instance of a severe storm in the immediate area. And we did our research on that after it came to light, and people weren't happy. Mostly negative feedback was members. It wasn't so much the visitors providing critical feedback, it was just members. And we looked into other pools that had that same practice. It seems to be about split from Black Hills, some do, some don't. It is recommended by some organizations to make a pool inside, it's supposed to be outside and inside. But we didn't, to my knowledge, offer any refunds or lose revenue that way. It was more so an inconvenience while the storm was present.
Thank you. Good question.
I did want to add too, our revenue for May was $58,621.41, and our expenses were[1709.79][1709.89]$71,453.37. This did include the interest on bond loan, which was $33,112.5. So we're significantly, significantly up from last month. April's revenue was $35,728. So we're getting into the season, so that's good news.
I have a question about the Evans Plunge. My question is, we had a political forum last weekend. Afterwards, I went into the plunge, they were going to use the plunge, and Chris verbally attacked me. And she said I couldn't be, I couldn't go to the Evans Plunge because I have difference of opinion, and I do have witnesses. And I don't think that's right, and we have an election tomorrow, and things are going to change.
Just for future reference, Chris, if you do make other comments, it can't be campaign related, so you know, it's not an appropriate thing for that.
All right, Krista, I know you had a meeting today. I listened to it. Could you please share what you guys did with everybody else?
Parks Recreation, the motivation, the crowd. Development.
Can't hear you. We did have a meeting today for parks and recs. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And we, before we had the meeting, we had, the members had met two times prior to that to just really go over the Tall Grass Plan, which we dissected park by park by park, which we have 16 parks. We did all but the treatment plan. We didn't do that. But we did 15 other parks that we have in the, in Hot Springs. And we, each park in the Tall Grass Plan has a clear needs and then a suggestion. And we took the clear needs and we wrote them down on white paper. And Gerald set these meetings up and kind of conducted them. And we went through them one by one. And we actually saw what we needed to do to move forward with the Tall Grass Plan. And there was kind of a consistency through that, through those that had to do with the ADA upgrades, with connecting to the Freedom Trail. And with, the big one at Butler Park, number one, was combining the soccer fields. So we, as a group, kind of discussed it. And then I asked them what they wanted to move forward with. And they said the clear needs, just what we had been discussing. So we brought that to the parks meeting today. And we talked it over with the rest of the members. And we went over what we had found. And so that's what we're going to move forward with. We also talked about the LWCF grant application. And that would be on the lighting of the Little League Field and moving the soccer fields. And that would be included with that. We talked about the wood chips to replace the sand, peat gravel, that's an ADA compliance measure. And we talked about a draft document for the recommendation of tree care in Hot Springs. Bill Peterson was there, he's an arborist. And the draft was actually put together by, at World, it was worked on with Josh Larson. He's an urban forest. And he's based out of Rapid City. And Bill looked at the draft and we all looked at it and thought it was a pretty good way to move forward. It's pretty basic. And he said that, that he liked it. And he felt that that was a very good start and something that could be built on. So that's what we talked about at the parks meeting. Then we also, at the Mueller Center, of course, you all know that tomorrow we have the voting here at the Mueller Center. And it is from 7:00 to 7:00. And I believe that includes all the districts. And then we have, starting on the 16th, or 15th, we have the Miss South Dakota 14th. Wait a second, sorry. On the 9th, we start the setup for Miss South Dakota. And that will continue until we have the Miss Dakota Pageant, which is on 16th, 17th. And the finals are on the 18th. So those are two great things that we will look forward to. Is there any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Barbieri, on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The Planning and Zoning Commission has been very busy lately. You'll see in the packet tonight, there's two new subdivisions, which I understand we haven't had for a while. Those have gone through the full Planning and Zoning Commission review. So they have been recommended to move forward to the city council at tonight's meeting. I also wanted to talk to you, I'm taking some advice from some folks. Well, I'm taking it from Carol Anne and Georgia to take advantage of this forum to let you know what I'm coming up on, working on. And Carol Anne had talked about, in the Historic District Commission, I had talked about our concerns over vacant buildings. And I will be looking at that on a closer level. The one thing that people say to me over and over again when they come into my office, in fact, a lot of people will actually make appointments to just talk about vacant properties, whether they're residential and affecting their neighborhood or the commercial properties that are degrading. I wanted to go over how I'd like to address this, some minor changes I'd like to make to the ordinance. But before I do that, I wanted to let you all know that this is something that I've been told to address and been asked to address. So if anybody from the public or the council that has any strong opinions on this or has any guidance for me, I'm open door. I'd love to hear from you to get your input in on how we, how we can address this. Because it does have a negative effect on other stores and within our neighborhoods and communities. And the last thing I wanted to hit on really quickly was, we had a lady come in today and she wanted to purchase an ice cream truck, one of those ones that you drive around the neighborhoods. My read of the transient merchant and peddler's license ordinance indicates that no mobile selling is permitted. And I just wanted to get a sense, if you-
We've had an ice cream truck for years.
Okay. So you don't think that that's particularly what they were looking for?
We have to do our research to ensure that what they're interested in lines up with what we permit.
Okay. I know we were going to be looking at the transient merchant and peddler's license ordinance anyhow. Maybe we could take a closer look at that during the admin. Okay, that's all I had.
That's a good idea.
They all boat ice cream trucks. I know there was one a few years ago.
There was?
Don Ruler ran one for several years until he passed away.
Item I, Public Safety, is on the 15th.
We didn't have a meeting.
You didn't have a meeting, was it?
No, we didn't have a safety meeting this time. I was out of town and there was, evidently our town is nice and safe, so we didn't have a meeting.
Good. Next one's on the 15th.
Third. Public Safety, 6:15. At 2:30.
Two.
At two.
I agree. Item J, Public Works.
We did have a Public Works meeting. We discussed the Hills Material Mining Contract, which we will be discussing later here in this meeting. There's an issue with the water meter at the Fall River County Jail. It needs to be updated. And the plumbing that's in there doesn't fit what we need to update. So we're going to discuss some ways and means of getting that done. Project updates, Albany Avenue. I'm going to stretch out a long ways and say, I drove by there today. And to my eye, it is completed.
Yeah.
I only seen one cone and it was off to the side of the road. So I'm going to assume that the Albany project is done. Loading docks, the guys that worked on them, we're still looking at the 1st of July. The loading docks, 1st of July opening. Boulder Falls pavement. Tracy's still working on getting all the points located. We discussed the lean contract out here at the, and we're still waiting on some federal regulations of some kind. We're talking about some DOT lighting going on on the bypass and up on University. And we also talked about our little bitty brush pile that we've got out there at the birth. Looking into chipping that. Hopefully we can use some of those chips at some other places. That was it.
Great, thank you. That was a good meeting. All right, Georgia, back to you for the golf course advisory committee.
There will be a regular meeting on the 24th at 10 o'clock. We haven't had a regular meeting now for a while because of the trying to get the course ready and everything. But we're going to review the proposed plan that we were working on. Master plan. And we're looking at, basically, doing a lot of watering. And we're looking at meters out there so we can evaluate how much water we're using. They do have a tournament today for the girls state golf. And so the golf course has been closed, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. They're doing great. They're very, very busy out there. They do have a two-person scramble coming up. There is a recording that they're, as part of our master plan, we've had issues with the pressure out there. So they're doing some different pressure site recordings to make sure we have the right amount. Because if we put in a new irrigation system, we need to have the right amount of pressure. There's, at now, at this time, there's no maintenance issues, which is a good thing. And I think everything is going very smoothly.
Thank you. Please state your name.
My name's Larry Martin. And I'd just like to ask a question. Where is the golf course meeting?
It will be at the golf course.
Okay. And you're in charge of the committee, were you at the tournament tonight?
At the tournament?
Yeah.
No, I was out of meetings for the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Item L. All right, apartment meeting, Andrea?
Next Tuesday at 7:00. Oh, June 14th.
That's at the apartment hall? All right, thank you, Andrea. Old Business, discussion of possible motion to approve updated mining contract with Hills Material on the city land adjacent to Hills Material Quarry.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? There is a change.
Yeah. I'd like to have more information on it, the location of the lot.
This has been an ongoing issue. Place that they're going to be mining is up above where their quarry is now. The city has some property up there that is actually not accessible for the city to get to. It's just up there. And they want to mine it. We're not transferring ownership. All we're doing is allowing them to mine it with compensation that we will receive. So much we'll receive, instead of money, we'll receive our gravel and rock and whatever we need.
I understood that part.
Change that we made is that when they're done mining, they have three years. It was two, I believe.
No, they didn't.
There was no, there wasn't one in there. Wasn't one in there. And what it does is they have three years from the time they're done mining to reclaim it, which means they have to put it back to as close to what it was before they started as is physically caused. And that's what we added on to, was that three years clause that wasn't in there before.
Because of that reclamation, usually they have a bonding issue that, I mean, people supply a bond. I don't know. Have you looked into any of that?
That'd be out of our hands to do. They would have to bond for it. They have to call the state.
Right. They can get a bond to make sure that when they're done, that they, it is covered so that the cost is not transferred to us.
For the reclamation?
The contract states it's not our responsibility to-
True. But then if we were to reclaim it, it would be at a cost if they did not. And usually the bond covers that.
I don't know how difficult that would be to figure out as we're taking the product in time.
But usually the bond is always required on any mining project for reclamation.
But is it, is it us that require that or the DNR or?
Well, we can require it. It doesn't matter who requires it. It's just something that should be done so that they don't say, well, we can't do it at the end of three years.
I make a motion that we defer this to the next meeting for further research on the bonding.
Are you making a vote?
Yes, I am.
I think I have to, I had a motion on the second, first one, didn't I miss it again?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have to take a vote on the contract as it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
What do you do?
Roll call.
I think it failed.
Failed. If you can amend your original motion.
Yeah, actually made the original motion, so.
I can, I can make a motion that we actually request-
We need you to, we need to amend this initial motion.
All right, do your motion, Carl.
We already voted and it failed. We voted and it failed.
That was the default then.
Yeah. Vote and then we'll just do another one. Can I have you restate the motion? It was to approve it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Carl?
No.
Tim?
What is the motion about?
To approve the contract as it is. Approve the updated mining.
Yes.
Georgia?
No.
Kara?
No.
Andrea?
Yes.
Krista?
No.
Carol Anne?
No. Two yeses, five no's.
Okay, so.
We can bring this up at the next meeting after we research the, resubmit it or-
Was the only concern the bonding or something else?
No, it was the bonding. Let's, let's-
Yeah, their bond is, mine is very regulated by the table.
However, reclamation is separate for every place that you actually mine, usually.
Yeah, but it's, it's mining on the city property. And if we should require a bond, we should look into putting it into the contract.
The company itself is already bonded and insured.
We understand that they're bonded.
I think this is the time to, if you have any other changes, to speak up because this has been ongoing for a period of negotiations. That's the only issue.
Okay, so the motion failed, correct, Misty?
If I was Hills Material, I'd go find my gravel somewhere else.
We'll recommend that.
All right. All right, so we'll look at that one again, I'm sure. New Business, item A, discussion of possible motion to sign change order in the amount of minus $28,200 for the sledge press equipment. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, presentation on TAP grant application for 2020, 2021 DOT reconstruction project by planning administrator, Ms. Barbieri. We get a slideshow?
We get a slideshow. And I appreciate your patience with this. I know this is something new. But I think it's important that we have this discussion before we move forward with just a simple memo in your folder. We're going to be looking at some new ideas. And I want to make sure that if you have anybody that asks you any questions, you can answer them. We're going to be looking tonight at a possible grant that I'd like to apply for for the city. It's called the Transportation Alternatives Grant Program. It's through the DOT and administered by the Federal Highway Administration. There we go. As you know, the DOT project is proposed to be bid out in 2019 and started construction in 2020. There's a large number of things that we're looking for, for that project, that we're going to have to be responsible for. That includes anything with our water and sewer upgrades, we're going to have to pay for that. Any type of upgrade to architectural lighting outside of a regular highway light, we have to pay for that. All landscaping, all special pavements, and any sidewalk in excess of six feet. So if we have a 15-foot sidewalk, we would be paying that alternative amount. The basic idea is that DOT, whenever they have a project, they pay for like a A-level. And if we want anything better than that, we're going to have to pay for it. So I know that Tracy and Nolan and I have been working around the clock, trying to figure out ways, trying to find grants, trying to find other solutions to how we can help stretch the taxpayers' dollars on this. How- We are the first ones in the state to go for it under these, under these ideals. Now, other places in the country, what I'm going to be talking about with this LID is really kind of commonplace now, it's just kind of a new concept here, so that's another reason why I wanted to have this talk. It does, will augment the 2020 DOT project, it will stretch our taxpayer dollars and create the downtown that we need and deserve. It addresses stormwater runoff, and that's where all of our access and all of our interest is going to be based on. And it's based around low-impact development principles, and I'll be describing what those are. It will provide all of our streetscaping and landscaping, that includes specialized pavements and landscaping, and will improve water runoff and water quality and will protect the river, that's one of the basic things to it, and provides a lower long-term maintenance cost. Now, the definition of LID is low-impact development. It's basically creating a break in the amount of where we're collecting stormwater before we put it off into our natural resource, the river or the streams. And what that break does is it allows the natural conditions to come back into play, things like infiltration, transpiration with trees, filtering, those are the things that whenever we create a paved environment, we lose that, and the ability to recharge our water, our groundwater is lost because we have the pavement. And what this does is it allows that to happen again. It happens in a downtown situation like a North River Street in a very man-made way, but it still functions the same way that you get that same cleaning of the water before it's discharged. And what you'll see with things like this happening is you'll get a lot less in the way of sediment deposits and a lot less in the way of floodwaters where you don't have a rush of water out into the stream, it's actually going to be timed a little bit slower. Now, the special notes about this particular application, like I said, we are the first in the state to attempt to use this fund for stormwater improvements. This fund has been available to use its way under environmental mitigation. If approved, we would partner with the DOT engineering for design costs. No additional engineering costs unless we choose to hire a clerk of the works would be required during construction. And what that means is that, and I should take a, I'll finish up this slide, it has the potential to transform the highway project into actual downtown revitalization project. It takes it from being pavement of sidewalk to pavement of drive to pavement of sidewalk. It breaks that up and creates a more habitable place for pedestrians, creates a cooler climate for our visitors, and it creates a more attractive place for everybody that enjoys our downtown. Now, one of the things I want to talk about real quickly is that we've been talking with DOT about this application. We had first been interested in a tiger grant which had a longer timeframe and would have given us more time. DOT said absolutely not, we administer that, we will not let you jump in on that, we've got projects in the queue on that, you can't have it. So they took, drew me over to this particular TAP grant, and what I was told by our design engineer for the DOT project was, is if you can get this through the TAP grant initial project approval, and we'll go through that, if you can do that, which means that you're going to have to hire your own engineer and get it through, then we'll be your engineer for the rest of it, basically putting out the gauntlet that if you can convince everybody else this is a good idea, we'll buy into it. It's a new concept for them, they've not had to deal with LID before, but they know it's coming. If we're able to do this, we will actually be on the forefront of the DOT learning curve. But why? Because hot springs is all about the water, and every single time that we sit down with our community people through our comp plan, through the Department of Resources, the one thing that you hear at every single meeting is, we've got to get back to our water, we've got to protect our water, our water is what made us. Let's put our money where our mouth is and protect our water. I went down here today to our meeting, and there's children swimming in it. Do they know that every time it rains, we wash salts and oils into the river? Probably not, is there enough to make a difference? Yeah, there actually is. But let's put our mouth in the same place as our feet and take care of the water. And LID is the stormwater technology of the future. It's usually cheaper and easier to maintain and will be required in the future. So if we have a design that doesn't include this, in the future, we might be forced to put it in anyhow at further cost. And this also gives us the ability to stretch our dollars to get the downtown project we need and want, and it has a generational project effect. Now, this is just a real quick little science thing, it's just a little summary that talks about whenever you increase the percentage of impervious surfaces, the amount of runoff that occurs and the impacts that it has. And basically, as the amount of impervious surface increases, the amount of water absorbed back into the ground decreases while runoff and flooding increases. So we want to kind of turn things back to where we're infiltrating more. Now, there is an importance of trees in LID, and I know we're really psyched to talk about trees, but trees actually are a vital portion of LID because they absorb water, they transpire, they create oxygen, they actually create a cooler environment, they create shade, and there's actually studies done, and I can bore you with that information as well, on how good trees are for business. There are actual studies that have been done that you can actually, a well-treeted shopping area can charge 10% more for the same items because people feel that there's an intrinsic value related to the area because of the setting that you're in, and it adds value to the property. Now, you can see on the bottom here, there's, on the left-hand side is Custer, South Dakota, not a tree in sight, and the one on the right-hand side is Spearfish, and it's covered with trees. It has a much more vital, active, and robust economy. Now, what could it look like? LID takes views, takes forms in different ways. It can be like the pods, but instead of a pod being put around with a curb and raised up, we're actually going to put the curb around but have cut-ins that will bring the water into it, and the plantings will be lower. It will take in the water, be able to filter that water, and we'll, actually, there's opportunities where you can put cisterns under it and have that available for people so they don't have to bring in their own water or borrow stores' watering. It can also look like, in the top right-hand corner, that's Flexi-Pave, man put in around a tree, great product, Plexi, Plexi-Pave. It's a rubberized, actually rubberized rubber, it's in a matrix, that you can actually pour water on and it goes straight through. And I've used this on a project in my last place that I worked, in Connecticut, on a 12% slope, we were able to put a two-foot wide strip along the roadway and have trees planted there. People were saying, it's never going to work, trees have never grown on the street, it's, they'll die, they'll never get enough water. You tip the sidewalk so that it drains straight towards that, the underground is a, it's an engineered soil so that it supports your sidewalk but allows roots to grow, and because it has voids in it, just like a jar full of marbles, you can fill it up with water, and it acts as storage, and the roots then go deep to get to that water, they leave your sidewalk alone so you're not paying for, you know, redoing your sidewalks, but they grow and they're thriving. Six years later, we have the biggest trees on that road that everybody said that couldn't happen. Really exciting stuff that can happen with LID, and I did show, as part of our discussions with DOT, they said, yeah, Kim, you know, you're talking this LID, what are you talking about? So you talked, I showed you a couple of things that could happen in downtown, things where we're using engineered soils, trees that are in pavement that you can get wheelchairs over, but yet it allows water to go through. This was an actual section of the plans where South Sixth Street is brought into Jensen Highway in South Chicago. And I showed how they had had it planned with all sorts of piping directly from the road into the river. And I showed how you can break that off, create those open green areas in lower, easily mowable, shallow basins, so they can then take the water, allow that water to infiltrate, though that water that can't infiltrate gets filtered through all that grass, gets pushed along, and by the time it reaches the river, it's cleaned. Now, what does that also do? It unplugs. We don't have curb on that side of the street, we have a two-to-three-foot rock edge to protect our pavement, and it allows the water to then just sheet drain off into the grass, adding extra filtering capabilities. Great thing for maintenance is you don't have to go and get out of a truck, stick your head in a catch basin to see if everything's working, you can drive by and see it. There's nothing secretive about it, so it's less cost, we're actually going to be saving the DOT project money and be able to put that money in other things. So it's a great way to, to basically unplug from all this piping. It was so funny, I was talking to a gentleman from DNR, and he was talking to me about another grant, that's further discussion, and he said, well, you know, all that we've been doing right now is just doing pipe replacement, that's what all of our grants go for is pipe replacement. I said, have you ever thought of doing LID and just unplugging them so you don't have to keep replacing them? And that way you don't have it, basically if something gets filled up with sediment, you clean it out and plant some seed. I mean, how easy is that, that you don't need to go for grants anymore to do pipe replacement? Now, this is what downtown LID options look like. I talked about rain gardens for our pods, we can actually use this lower section here. This is pervious pavers, and it looks like a stamped concrete, has a little bit of voids in there, you do that around the rain gardens, and it creates our whole intersection areas as areas where you can collect the water and store it. And if it does overflow, it goes back out into the storm, regular storm system and gets deposited out, just like it normally would if you have really bad flood events. But it creates opportunities that we wouldn't have before, because there is no grant out there that's, that will allow a city to get money for nice pavement. There is no grant out there that will let a city get money to plant trees or flowers. This does. Okay, now, the first step that we have to do for this project is do a letter of intent. It's due July 15. It requires a consultant complete review of the project and analysis of the project cuts, not permitted to use a city engineer. I guess they've had a lot of people sending it out to their street department, and they put in all the costs that they would do on the project, and then they find out later that they still owe about $100,000 and the city has to pony up. They no longer do that. So we had to bite the bullet, we did ask AE2S for an estimate. The reason why they were chosen, out of the, I think it was 27 approved DOT contractors, they were the only ones that had experience in LID. So they were absolutely thrilled to talk to me, oh my gosh, somebody knows what I'm talking about, you know? But it does include a mandatory site meeting with the grant board, the DOT, our consultant and us, it's a half-day long, that's the time that we get to really sell them on this, they've never seen this before, and I want to make them so excited that they're going to be afraid to miss it, they're going to be afraid to miss out on this opportunity. And if accepted, then the full application would be required and would be due September 30th, and Black Hills Council of Local Governments has offered to assist us with that. Now, for that, I handed out some things that were inadvertently missed from your packet. You will have sticker shop, I did. AE2S, their estimate for doing this work is $20,000. I've asked them to see if they could bring that down to 15, in between 15 to 10, with allowing me to help out ameliorate some of the costs, and I also wanted to talk to them because this is their big opportunity to sell themselves as LID for the DOT as well. So this is a marketing option for them as well, so I'd like to get some feedback on that. That's worth something if they partner with us, and I don't think that we should be shouldering that whole thing on our shoulders. So hopefully that number will be coming down. But for that $20,000, what do we get? We have the opportunity to get a minimum of $100,000 up to $500,000 for LID. If we don't get it, worst-case scenario, we still can use it for green resource grants, we have to update our water plan, there's also a clean water plan that we can go for as a grant, and I've also been looking into a couple of private opportunities for LID from, there's different nonprofit organizations that are promoting what they call Complete Streets. And Complete Streets is a nationwide movement to not only create a street that's safe for vehicles but safe for bicycles, safe for pedestrians, and includes everything that we're incorporating, the wave-finding signs, the specialized lights, the trees, the flowers, the stuff that makes going downtown a joy, which we haven't had for a while. And those are the kind of things that I think that we need to be putting through as a goal. Now, before I leave that slide, I know $20,000 is a, is a lot to absorb, any questions on that before I go to the next slide?
Gee, we've been doing that forever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I can come back and answer any questions that you have. Now, the council action tonight, we're asking to approve the engineering analysis fee for application. It has the potential to gain us $100,000 to $500,000 for the highway project. It can be reused for updating our state water plan, and what the TAP grant doesn't cover, Kim, the report can be used to have leverage on other funding, and those are the ones that I just went through with you. It's really, really necessary to do this now. We did get a very so-so message from Mark Malone who said that the time is, the essence is now, what the possibility of, if we wait longer for this and we wait till next year's round, is that we will push back the project a year.
Does everybody know who Mark Malone is?
Mark Malone is our design engineer with the DOT, and he's the one that spoke with Nolan today, and basically was saying that the sooner the better, because what's happening is they're moving ahead with their design, all that pipe, all those calculations, all that stuff is happening right now, and if we can say stop, and if we can catch their attention, they're going to have to address this. Now, if we don't get it, they will continue moving on, and then our alternatives to use other grants will have to include going before them and stopping them with the governor's office, state senators, state representatives, to try and push forward, because this is literally our only chance to make this work.
Are you looking at this coming from your budget, then?
Eventually, what I was hoping to do is see if we could get it funded out of the 212 fund, is a sales tax fund, and then in the, when we start the process, I would put that money directly in my budget so it's reflected there.
So budget here and you can wait then?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to do, it would just be kind of a loan ahead of the schedule.
Ahead of the grant?
Yeah. Yes. There are my questions, if you had any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them for you, but there's so many new things, I just, I wanted you to know how exciting this is and what the opportunities are.
Question, if we pay the $20,000 and we don't get the grant, what happens?
Okay, we will be taking that same report, because of the way that they're going to be doing it, it's going to be almost like a...
AE2S.
AE2S, yes, our engineering consultants. AE2S will be creating almost like a menu. These are the different LID, I'm trying not to use all the buzzwords. These are all the different types of details that we can add to the plans, one for tree wells, to rain gardens, to bio-retention basins, for grass swales. They're each going to have a separate to-do. I can take those out and reform them, I'll have the numbers that are going to be included with them, and I can go after the green resources grant, I can go after the clean water grant. I'd like to go after the clean water grant early because we're going to have to hit the green water grant later. It's the only grant that's available to pay for our water and sewer.
When are you going to go after that? Because if we do this, we match our housing standard...
These are all the different types of details that we can add to the plans. One for tree wells, to rain gardens, to bioretention basins, for grass swales. They're each going to have a separate to-do. I can take those out and reform them. I'll have the numbers that are going to be included with them. And I can go after the green resources grant. I can go after the clean water grant. I'd like to go after the clean water grant early because we're going to have to hit the green water grant later. It's the only grant that's available to pay for our water and sewer.
When are you going to go after that? Because if we do this, we match your housing study, I think you could talk me into just about anything. And so, maybe you wait till we have our budget hearings and put some of this, if we do this, not come back in two weeks for another $20,000 for something else you're going to do.
Oh, this will keep my plate full. I'll be busy, busy. And with that $20,000, I will be able to do a lot with it. Even if, let's say that the TAP grant comes in and they say, okay, we can do $100,000, and what we're going to do is the easy stuff at the end, unplugging all that, doing the grass swales, but the stuff downtown, the specialty things, we're not interested in. I can still take the report, take it to the green resources and say, okay, I have this piece that I want to pay for. I want to do all of our intersections. That would be rain gardens, that would be specialty in forest pavements, and that will be all the associated, I could even get cisterns with it so that people can just have a hand pump and pump and wash the water, their plants right there. So we can have multiple uses with that $20,000. And hopefully it'll be less than $20,000 after I get done with them.
However...
However?
If we go past July 15th, we have to wait until...
A year.
Next year.
Yes.
And that pushes the entire project back another full year.
Yeah, if they have to go back and redesign, then yes, it does.
It has the potential.
It has that potential.
You had made the comment that the potential to, the grant funds to get is anywhere between $100,000 and $500,000. Put that into perspective for me on what does that cost, this stuff? When you say a tree with a square with that spongy stuff, what's that going to cost? So if you get just $100,000, are you talking a three block? That's all you can do? Are you talking, you can do all the way, you know, from Evans Plunt all the way down? Put into perspective, what does $100,000 buy?
Okay. I don't have the numbers, because that's what we were actually going to be hiring our consultants to give us. But I'll tell you what I had six years ago in Connecticut. We were able to do a full-length block, both sides, new sidewalk with the engineered soils for the trees, a two-foot wide strip of a flexi pave, a tree every 20 feet. And that one came in bidding on, just like we would be bidding on prevailing wage at around $300,000.
One block is $300,000.
But that was with everything. We wouldn't be doing that. We would be doing pods. So we wouldn't be having consistent rows of things, and we won't have the, I am not planning on having the engineered soils the entire length of the sidewalk. It's expensive. I would just do it where we're going to be planting the trees in about a 20 by 20-foot area.
I think they did that on Sixth Street in Denver, didn't they?
Similar.
Down the center of the entire thing.
Yeah, you're going to see that whenever you go to, I know Cindy was talking about some stuff she had seen. She had seen some rain gardens that were put in along the roads in Utah. Was it Salt Lake City? Denver has some. Actually, the A E two S has been very, very busy with some of these low-impact designs, actually in Rapid. But they've yet to break down into the DOT. Once you can break into the DOT, then it becomes mainstream. Because they're the ones that write the rules for everybody else. So that's why I think I can get some money back from A E two S, because this is their marketing chance. They get DOT for a half-day.
Let me ask you one other question.
Sure.
Is there a chance, because this is not the greatest, the largest highway in the world? We want larger sidewalks, I've heard people say.
Absolutely.
And we're going to plant trees in them. And then we have all these big trucks coming through here. It's DOT. I asked Nolan about this today. Are they going to approve that? You know, trucks driving down a highway with big trees on it?
Yeah. That's actually, and I'll address Cindy's questions on this because she was very anti-this at first, because she's a business owner. And from a business, you don't want trees hiding your signs, you don't want to have trees against your building. DOT doesn't want trees out into their highway. So the key is to pick the right tree.
That's what Nolan's...
Yeah. And there are trees, and there are trees that do it.
Poplars.
What's that?
Poplars.
No, you don't want poplars? They're too fast-growing, weak-wooded, and very disease-prone.
They go straight up.
But they do go straight up. But they go up straight up a little bit too fast and too high. Ones I would be looking at would be columnar cherries. And they're actually, the cherries are like this big...
What kind of tree?
Columnar cherries. They have a nice flower, and the fruit is virtually, it disappears. It's almost like a pea. So that you're not going to have that dirty messiness. And then they're a hard fruit. They tend to roll before they squish. But there are columnar maples, there are columnar ash, although we don't want ash in here, I understand. But there are ways that you find, and what you want to look for are the ones that, like the velvet pillar, the green giant. You know, there's different varieties that get that upright, narrow crown that's still, or vase-shaped, that will go up like that. Yes, DOT knows that we're looking at trees. They're not real keen on it. But they do say that it's more of a guideline, that they don't have trees. They've just been able to talk other people out of it. And I don't think we're going to be doing that because it has so much to do with our identity.
Okay, I'm going to see if there's any more questions. We kind of need to...
I know, wrap things up. Sorry. I could go on for this right...
We know a lot. And we appreciate all the research you've done, and even dealing with me.
So I didn't want trees.
I know.
So I have a motion in a second, I believe? Do I?
No, you don't.
You still...
You just spent $20,000?
Yes.
Yes. That's what we... Correct. I mean, you're asking them to approve grant application.
And using the 202 funds.
212 sales tax funds. And I will be putting it in my budget so that we'll be counting against my budget for $20,000.
If we approve it.
If you approve it. But I count on you.
Make a motion, or we go ahead with this?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion from the council? All in favor? Did we approve this?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Is that unanimous, all in?
God bless you. Yes, that's unanimous.
Motion carried. Thanks for all your hard work, Ellen. Thank you. I think we're going to be ahead of the curve tonight. We pay a planner to do, so we appreciate you, me and planner. Item C, don't go away, Ms. Barnier. Discussion of possible motion to approve the seven lot Mount Gibson subdivision located on Doran Road between Hickory and 24th Streets as recommended by the Plan and Zoning Commission.
So move.
Hope to do it. Georgia?
I could do it.
I need a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
I still blew my ear on the way.
Oh, thanks.
There you go, Mark.
I'm Maureen McManus-Tuma, 2340 Doran Road. I usually attend your meetings, but I haven't been out of town. So I, one, would like a discussion of what this involves, who's proposing it, like the owner, and will it entail septic, gutter, and who pays for it? You're talking about a very limited part of town. We have roads, no one maintains them, that's fine with me. But to suddenly get tossed with possible septic and gutter, I'd like to know who's going to pay for them. And there's only two residents on Doran and 23rd, 24th Road. And then it's clear, open territory to the east, the Slagels own part of it up there. But in our territory, there's only two people possibly up there. So I'd like your response.
And I ask you to...
I'm John Flight. I live next door to Maureen, and I oppose the road too because the top of that hill, I understand that the man wants fire protection, but the terrain is just so steep, I believe he lapped every guard rails, you know, retaining walls. And then what he has proposed is that alleyway will go right through my yard. And if somebody would happen to come around that corner, they're going to end up right in my house. And I just oppose it, and we'll just go from there.
John, do you have lots one, two?
One, two.
I have one, two, three, four.
One, two, three, and four. But behind your lots is a 30-foot alleyway.
Yeah.
Okay. And that separates you from lots...
Mr. Eng. Mr. Eng's property, yes.
So if there's already, is that already planted in? It's already planted in?
That was plotted in in 1917, I believe.
Could have been planted in 1896.
Yeah.
That's when my house up on Winnicott was built. But the fact of the matter is, it's still there.
Sure.
Are you on Doran Road, one, two, three, and four?
Yep.
And he's on North 24th Street, one, two, three, and four, on block 38.
But if the council goes up there and actually looks how the terrain is, is this not feasible?
Well, I've been up there. I did travel up there and look at it. And any development, as far as I'm concerned, and this looks like a pretty good project to me, and they're going to pay for it, is something, I did look at where that 30-foot alley is supposed to be, which separates one, two, three, and four of 38 from block 39, lot 11, and the 30-foot Feltzbar Road. Where that is located is just about where you've got a building sitting on part of that alleyway.
And I talked to Kim, and I said, you know, if we do have to have a road through there, I said I would trade the alleyway in between me and him, and I would give up lot number four on my property, so it would come out straight on 24th Street.
Well, you want to do away with the alleyway completely.
In between me and him on the east side.
Right. And Kim, how would that be accomplished? Who would have to do that?
That would be a... That would be a private matter between Mr. Eng and Mr. Flight. I have talked with Mr. Eng. He's very interested in Mr. Flight's ideas. What would happen tonight is that if we were able to get an approval, they would have to come back with a modification with that land swap. Right now that they're, when they got the information from Mr. Flight, they sent out engineers to determine the viability of the project, to do that swap. And it actually looks like it might offer some savings to Mr. Eng for the length that he'd have to put in water and sewer. So he is considering it. I haven't heard back from him. He's in Korea right now and was unable to attend tonight's meeting.
But it would, it would take both of them accepting...
Absolutely. And they would have to have a plat that would be signed by both of them, come before the commission, for the council, and for a modification.
Okay. Thank you.
I could real quick answer Mrs. Tuma's questions. I don't see...
There he is.
Yeah, no, I... I'm not seeing that the engineer, he was supposed to come tonight. I know he's really short-staffed, so I'll try and fill in. The new road is a wider road than what was originally plotted. It would be a paved road with curbs. Tracy Bastian has the full road profiles and design layout. It so far has been approved by him that it meets all of the city's standards. The application came in with a form that said that that and the roadway for Gibson Road for access to lot F would be made to road standards. The one to lot F doesn't, we don't want to have to put in a cul-de-sacs. We're going to, we asked them to put in a hammerhead so that if fire vehicles got back there, they would be able to turn around. There, it will be necessary for the construction of Feltzbar to use retaining walls. And so, Mr. Eng is considering the use of retaining walls to make sure that there's adequate snow removal sites for our roadway there. The only thing that's outstanding is a meeting with Tracy, myself, the property owner across the street, and Mr. Anderson to try and get a drainage easement across the road from, I guess it would be lot A, because it naturally flows there right now, but we have no drainage easement for our road drainage there now. We should probably get that established, just so that we can maintain it in the future. I'm big on making sure that we have proper easements for drainage. So, did that answer all your questions, Maureen?
Well, so we will be responsible for septic and...
No, actually, whenever, they're going to be putting in their own water and sewer. And when it gets near your house, you have the option that you can work with them to get hooked up if you want to, or you can stay on your septic.
But the property owner, Eng, did you say?
Eng, E-N-G.
Eng is responsible for putting in their own water and...
Absolutely.
And what are we going to do with Doran Road? Is that going to be paved?
It was not planned as part of it. Actually, I take it back. They did plan on paving it because they're going to be putting in $350,000 to $500,000 homes. That's their goal. And so they wanted to be able to, after it was done, to be able to pave that for kind of aesthetics reasons, so I think...
Are they going to go from Hickory down to 24th?
Yeah. That was what they had originally planned in their application.
And they are, they are paying for...
Feltzbar.
Feltzbar and the turnaround.
Feltzbar and the turnaround to Gibson Road, and they had planned on doing Doran Road. They did plan on also putting in sidewalks. We did say, from the planning and zoning standpoint, that they were optional because they wouldn't hook up to anything. They would kind of be, you know, sidewalks to nowhere.
We had one of those once.
Yeah. But that's what, the last I had heard of that. Anything else, Maureen?
But so, it's not going to be a cost to the property owners that are currently there?
Correct. The only cost that they would have is if they wanted to hook up, it would be their laterals.
Only if they want to hook up to the sewer.
Correct.
Thank you.
Wes, did you have a question?
Yes, I want to know, there is no sewer on 24th Street now. So if the man proposes to hook the sewer, there is no sewer. So where's the sewer going to come from?
His engineers had found two locations nearby. They are looking at the options of which direction they're going to be coming in from. It would require either a lift station or a grinder pump, depending on which one that they use. So they've been working with Tracy on trying to figure out the best one that would be provided, but they have planned out on their roadway sections, alternatives for both. Both are pretty lengthy.
There's three blocks.
They're lengthy, yeah.
You're telling us here, he's going to pay for this. He's going to pay to put that sewer up 24th Street.
Through the rock, yeah. That's what he's proposing.
It's going to be in writing. This man will pay for this.
Well, that's, that's why we changed, we were getting away from these experimental things. They're going to have to have it in writing, and they're going to pay for it.
That's what I want to know. Will it be in writing? It would be no cost to the city of Hot Springs or the taxpayers.
Well, there's the old water line running up 24th. They could dig that and put sewer in there.
But they have to have a separation distance, so they'd still be having to dig, dig a trench. My understanding is, what they put in their application, and Mr. Eng was pretty detailed on what he was planning on doing, and Maureen will be glad to get you a copy of that. Was to provide the water and sewer and the paved roads with the curb and gutter. The only thing that they didn't include was the easement for drainage, and that's just one of those things that I feel very strongly about. Because it was a written document and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and brought to the city council, it then becomes a binding document. Those are part of the approved regulations that are regarding and guiding this particular development. I think whenever we get to the point where they're actually building a road and we're up there and we're assessing things, there'll be other things that will come up, like our easements and things like that, that we'll definitely get in writing. And with the final, if you want, and I think this might be a good way to do it, is just a clarification on the final plat map before it gets signed and filed on the records that we put that is to the cost of the developer. And I think that might be a way to protect everybody.
When we, we're reading the described request, and so none of it is signed. So I mean, I guess I think we need something for sure signed that they're going to do that.
Okay, I think the best thing to do is to put that description full on the plat, plat map?
Yes.
And that way we have it in writing and everybody signs off on it.
Honestly, if you just declared that development follows chapter 28 of ordinances, that clarifies everything, because that's black and white, you know, ordinances. That's what we failed to do with the Boulder Falls instance, is accepting development without following what's written in our ordinances.
Yeah. And I do want to make sure that Right. And I do want to make sure, I did talk to Georgia today, she and I, and actually Krista and I went up there today. No building permits will be issued for any of the lots until the all the amenities, all the public improvements are approved by the city engineer and then taken before the council and approved by the council and accepted as city. That way we don't have any partially-built homes, people wanting to get in, and we've got halfway-built stuff and people walk off. So it's a way to be protective, and that can be put in writing as well.
And do these cover lots west of us or just east?
Oh, no.
From you, it'd be just east. And I'll get you those reports.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So all we have to do now is get that chapter 28 put in there.
Actually, you can do, if you do an approval, just say that ask me technically.
Okay. Do we have, do we have a motion in a second? Do we need to revise?
Yeah, I'll amend it to chapter 28.
Okay. Georgia amends it to include chapter 28?
Why couldn't you put some verbiage in there that clearly says the developer will pay all costs? That, it takes all the guesswork out of it.
Because I think that's already in chapter 28. That's your responsibility.
Yep. And among other things too, very pertinent to the development that we want to have included. It's somewhat of a mutant point that has to follow our ordinances because-
I know that, that's why I want you, if you, if you got the man's signature on a piece of paper, then it doesn't come down on ordinance.
We'll put it on the plat. I'll just make sure it's put on the plat.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's kind of how a former mayor got around doing this.
I know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we just want to stick with chapter 28 as the ruling way.
All right, thank you for your comments, I really appreciate that. I have a motion and a second, and the amendment is to include all chapter 28 requirements. Is that right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Don't leave yet, Kim? Item D, discussion and possible motion to approve a four-lot neighborhood work subdivision located on the southeast corner of North 23rd Street and Washington Avenue. Where people have been here for a while, that's where the old water tower was. On this?
I would make a motion to approve.
All right, discussion? Kim, what are the setbacks on this?
The setbacks? Each lot had to meet 60,000 square foot lot size, a minimum of 50 foot of frontage, with 25-foot front yard setbacks, 10-yard side yard setbacks. If it was against the alley, it had to be make sure I get this right, 15, if it was a if there was an outbuilding and it was attached to the building, if it was not attached, it would be five foot to the alley. If it's, the rear lot is not on an alley, like on lot A, they have two front yards and two side yards. So it'd be 25, 25, 10, and 10.
So they do meet this setback?
Yes, they do. I actually had to have them do it like four times to get everything right.
Isn't that how it's shown on here?
That's correct.
The dotted lines are the setbacks?
Yes.
Thank you.
It gets a little confusing because they, they left the original lot lines back there, so it gets a little confusing.
When are they going to start on this?
They want to get start ASAP, as soon as things are going. They've been working closely with the State Veterans Home and are hoping that these are governor's houses that can fulfill some of their working people's needs for housing.
It's a great plan. Any other discussion?
I have, I have a motion and a second.
What are we going to discuss?
I thought we did have a second.
Yeah, Carl and Tim did it.
Oh, I may have missed it, Tim.
Tim cited it.
Got it.
So we, we were allowed to discuss. And if there's no other discussion, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have two new subdivisions, divisions. Thanks, Kim, I know you've really worked hard on all of this, and I really appreciate it. But you still can't leave, one more. Item E, discussion and possible motion to approve the merging of lot E and D into a single parcel located on the south side of Jennings Avenue between 22nd and 23rd Street. And you have a drawing, I believe. No?
It isn't.
Somewhere. What's the little one? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? I think that's a, no? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, discussion and possible motion to submit draft EIS response from the City of Hot Springs directed by Nolan admitting references to alternative uses for the VA. You might remember a couple months ago, it looked very similar, except for what's been charged to red and crossed out.
I'll make a motion to accept this version.
What are we going to do today, though, isn't it kind of?
That's what I thought. Not employed, so they push today.
I think it's later in the day.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember, I just, we got a couple more weeks.
Kara, I just said it was today. Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's moved out.
Bob, do you have a date on that, Bob Nelson?
Well, I'm Nelson, 405 Albany. And it's our understanding it is June 20th, which is important, because as you were talking about, it was June 6th. You wouldn't have the opportunity to comment. So it is June 20th, that's what we have told everybody. I would like to thank you for amending the draft EIS response. Can't say enough how important it is that the City of Hot Springs is a consulting party, along with all the other consulting parties that have opposed the VA's alternative use. It speaks volumes for you as a unanimous body to speak against it. Given that the response deadline is June 20th, you still have an option to beef it up if you want to do that, add more details as far as the effect to the city. Mayor DeVries has talked about-
Tonight, we have to approve what's in front of them?
I understand that.
Or not approve?
I understand that. What I'm saying is you have an opportunity to submit another comment, and another comment, and another comment. So, to speak to the potential cost, if you have to redo the water treatment plant, Mayor Donnell had spoken to that. There's a lot of other things, but this is a start. And I'd like to thank you all for unanimously approving it, removing the alternative uses. The alternative use is our road, we just don't want to go down. If that's something that has to be addressed, there's, there'll be an opportunity to do that. But don't offer that up. And I appreciate you folks removing that, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Bob.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second, Karen?
So I have a motion and a second. And if there's no other discussion, I'll ask for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, discussion and possible motion to approve construction phase contract for parallel, partial parallel taxiway out of the airport.
So move.
Motion approved.
Any discussion?
Is this? Is this actually for the construction, or is this just another engineering?
Same firm.
Construction phase.
Yeah, it's just the phase of it.
It's a piece of it.
But this is not the actual construction?
It's the construction phase, not the actual installation of the partial parallel taxiway.
Dealing with the FAA. They're not an easy bunch.
This is, this is going to cost us?
Five percent?
Eighty-eight thousand dollars?
The entire project's over a million, our portion about the five percent.
It just baffles me how every meeting we're paying another law, another, either a lawyer or an engineer. I, God, I was in the wrong profession, I'm sorry.
It's one way out.
Is this in the budget? We knew we were going to have to.
Yeah. This is by the way.
It's been requested by the FAA for a couple of years. It's in our master plan.
In order to continue to get airport-
And based on, I'm sorry, Misty.
In order to continue to get the airport improvement money, the FAA is requiring we don't do this.
But where's it going to get paid out of?
Right now, the 202 fund pays for the five percent of our airport improvement, and we budgeted $40,000 in this year.
Thanks, Misty. Any other discussion questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, discussion and possible motion to set special hearing on June 13th at 2:30 PM.
12:30.
I'm sorry, 12:30 PM at City Hall to canvass votes. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, if you all understand what that is?
This is just for canvassing the votes? This does not include what's been tabled to the next meeting for tonight?
Correct. It'll be a one, one-subject meeting, canvassing votes, that's it. We do have at least five mailings in town?
And this will not be an executive session?
No, it's public meeting.
We do it every time we have a session.
Which is every year.
My question was, we had stuff tabled till the next meeting?
No, no.
This was not being considered the next meeting?
Right.
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See you all then. Item I, discussion and possible motion to temporarily close North Garden Street on July 2nd for the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department Youth Watcher Fight.
Water fight. Water.
I think it will be a very large, canyon-like water fight. Confluence of our volunteer fire department, but it also includes the youth. It is their 125th anniversary of being a volunteer fire department, which is significant. And I think we should soak youth in honor of this occasion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Happy 125th. It's awesome. Item J, discussion and possible motion to approve travel request for Mr. Schroeder to go to the elected officials workshop in Pierre on July 20th. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? We're over it. John, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Misty, your finance officer's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As will continue to be the practice, for the first meeting of each month, you have a memo in your council packets with the year-to-date profit and loss summary through May 31st. There's a fund summary report that shows budget versus actual for revenue and expenses, so you can see how the departments of the city are doing compared to our plan. And then also the current cash balances. And all those are broken out by fund. We all know that tomorrow is elections. They have set up over, in the auditorium, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I'd like to take a moment to thank the county and this council for allowing us to have a combined election. I attended the election school that was put on by the county last week. It was well-attended. We have a number of very giving individuals that will be serving a 13-hour day. So as you go in to cast your votes tomorrow, make sure that you're very kind to those election workers and thank them. They are the gatekeepers of democracy, and it's a long, hard day for them. They cannot leave the building once they're here. And so to have so many people in our community that are willing to step up and do that says a lot about the citizens of Hot Springs, and make sure we show them our appreciation tomorrow. Because they're all long days.
It's a long day.
Today was the kickoff for summer rec. Our city finance office has been very busy with all the sign-ups at City Hall. And I know that we're all happy to see summer rec started for the youth in our community and continued year over year. We've got a great director, coordinator, who has done a wonderful job. And we're just happy to see summer rec started and everything goes smoothly for sign-ups. The next big thing for us will be budget season. This is the last call for budget training. Well, actually, I will reach out to any newly elected officials and share the upcoming budget training. But for those of you here now, and that will continue to be here after election, if you are interested in going to the one-day, five-hour course, please be sure to let me know. RSVPs are required by the 22nd of June. Cost of the training is only $25, that includes lunch, and it is in Rapid City, so we can carpool to get there. There is also an elected officials workshop that I'll be talking about one more time at our next meeting after we have some new folks and faces among us. That's at the Ramkota Hotel in Pierre, that's held on July 20th. And that course also is a one-day basic crash course on local government at rooms reserved. So anyone interested in attending that, please be sure to let me know. The municipal league always does a very good job on the workshops that they, and the trainings that they put on. So if you have the time and are interested, I definitely recommend attendance. And I will be out for finance officer's school Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to go.
Thanks, Misty, and thanks for getting trained, appreciate that. Nolan?
I'll keep my updates centered around all the traffic in Hot Springs the next couple of weeks. If you've been downtown at all today, I'm sure you've seen the orange signs and maybe some of the barricade cone setup. The DOT is resurfacing their bridges. They have three bridges on the actual highway in Hot Springs, one being by the Flatiron, one being across, or up from Dale's and Battle Mountain Avenue, and the third one being 385 North up from the New Drop Inn. They're going to be grinding them down, resurfacing, talking with the DOT. They have it contracted out to a company in Missouri. It should take them one week to do this, they'll be out of here hopefully by Friday. We had an update go out on Nixle. So citizens that subscribe to that receive texts or email, or text and email, depending on how they subscribe. There was a note in the Star as well in yesterday, or last week's edition. But again, it's a one-week project, there should be in and out. And with that, we're asking the company to give us an idea how much it might cost the City of Hot Springs to resurface a couple of our bridges. I know Windicotta and Jennings are both in need of some TLC, if not more. The second item is, our city personnel will be painting the curbs, crosswalks, handicap spaces, and parking lines this week. They'll be starting pretty early in the morning. They'll be starting pretty early in the morning to do this. I believe they'll start tomorrow morning here at the Mueller Center. They'll progress all throughout the week. It kind of depends on what color they're doing which day. Because once you do one color, we have to clean out the painting machine and do another. And by that point, there's usually too much traffic on the street to continue. So you'll see yellow one day, white the next, blue the next, depending on how far along they are. Our goal is to get this done before the South Dakota pageant. Unfortunately, our painting is all surface level, so when vehicles drive over it, it does wear pretty quickly. We're looking forward to DOT project for many reasons, not just for possibly trees downtown, but also for recessed and tape markers. So when the DOT does their project, they'll actually grind out those spaces. They'll do below-surface taping, which is reflective and much more durable than just us painting them each year. And the last item is we do have the South Dakota next week. That's the 16th, 17th, and 18th. So basically, when you're out in the road, just be prepared to take longer to get where you're going. Be courteous because these are the people that help us sustain our city. And then also get ready on Saturday because there will be a parade at, I think, 10 AM. That will certainly delay traffic. Again, NICSOL update will go out, as well as Facebook and Star reminders. That's all I have for my update.
Few things we didn't touch on. Just wanted to let everyone know that there's gonna be a violence, a domestic violence crimes training on June 14th at the Fire Hall. It's from 9 AM to 4 PM. If you have any other questions about that, let me know. Also wanted to let you all know that we're looking to start the DARE program in the schools in the, in the fall. And if anybody on the council has any concerns about that, to contact our police chief. Also wanted to, I don't think everybody gets this, Dakota Resources Connections Magazine, but we are highlighted in it as Hot Springs comes together for the better. And it's basically the program that Christie Wagner is doing with SHEDCO. They're focusing on health and wellness, tourism, recreation, business and economy, economic development, and housing. So it's nice to be recognized for our efforts and we really appreciate those involved. And they have a really cute picture in there of SHEDCO people. The other thing is I want to thank the bid board for paying for, I believe, half of the solar-powered lights on the welcome signs up by ShopCo. We have really cool signs and now you can even see them, that one at night. So I think that's a huge ongoing, cost-free improvement to our city. That's all I have. Thank you all for being prepared. I asked for an easy meeting. My staff did not do that. I know who you are. But we got a lot done again and I do appreciate your efforts.
I'd like to mention one more thing. Since this is Hot Springs, the, Hot Springs, the Dakota, the Veterans Town, today is June 6th, 1944. We felt we had the longest day in history. It was D-Day. I'd like to recognize all the veterans. Thank you all.
Very important. Anybody else? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?